All right, the time is now 5:00 p.m. and I call this administrative meeting that the City Council of Ozark to order. So first up, we have a public hearing for a public use violation at 1513 Lakeview Road. So I call this public hearing to order. Do we have anyone in attendance speaking for or against declaring the property at 1513 Lakeview Road a public nuisance?
So just to confirm, Matt did go by there today and with that attendance does not really need to have a court government force.
Thank you so much. Okay, is there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak for or against this property being declared? I will call this public hearing to a close. Next up, we have recognition, a recognition of the 19U baseball team. Mayor.
This team here tonight finished third in our World Series tournament a few weeks ago, and I watched those games and I can tell you they weren't a nickel's worth of difference in the top three. Anyone could have won it, and they all did a great job. But I love each one of them because we didn't have a list of who was coming. If you would just stand up and tell us your name and where you're from, if you don't mind, coaches and clear.
Senator Rivera, Boise, Alabama, Carroll School. So, sorry. John, front John, high school.
Freddie Lowry, Ozark, Alabama, Henson High School.
Brody Walker, Ozark, Alabama, Jevon High School.
Brooks Olive, Devon, Alabama.
Evan Sorrow, Slocum, Slocum High School.
Larry here, Slocum, Slocum High School.
How do Williams, Devon, Alabama, Devon High School.
Randy Wilson, Geneva, Alabama, Geneva High School.
Carter News, Denver.
Connor Thrash, Ayrton, Alabama, Ayrton High School.
Bryson, you follow Alabama, you follow high school?
A few minutes, I want to get all of y'all prepared, take a picture, but before I do that, I've known David Heath since I was in the seventh grade. We went to school together, ran track together. I know you can't look at us and tell it now, but David has always been a superstar baseball player, high school, college, professional, but that's not what we're here recognizing for tonight. I'm going to read this stiff recognition presented to David Heath for his outstanding leadership in sports and baseball. Over the past 10 years, David has led Outlaws 19U baseball team to a remarkable success, winning 198 games, securing five state championships in the DPP Major World Series, the 2019 AAU National Championship, and the 2023 Grand Slam World Series. Mr. Heath has presented the young men in Ozark and the fire grass area with the benefits of quality baseball program fostered not only their athletic skills, but also instilling values of teamwork, discipline, and sportsmanship. His dedication to these young men and this baseball program has benefited the entire community, fostered pride, unity, inspiration, inspiring others to contribute to the program's continuing success. And David, we just want to recognize you. Y'all come up here and get around.
I'm going to do the other one. I promise we're standing out here.
I might go to sit down.
David wants to say a few words. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to thank the city for all they've done for our program over the years. I'm very appreciative of y'all bringing us in here tonight and recognizing the successes we have had over the last 10 years. It's been a, it's been a long road, but we thoroughly enjoyed it. My son, Morgan Heath, Brett Reed, we started this journey in 2014. We participated in nine World Series. Last year, I had some health issues, we weren't able to go to the World Series in Dixie, but we were able to go to Panama City and win that, so that was, that was a blessing. I wish you could have seen that when we went seven in another one, it was, it was outstanding for sure. I have two young men I would like to step out, Brooks Olive, Brody Walker, y'all step where they can see who y'all. These two guys have put up with me for four years. So you think about you trying to run a summer program and you try to get the players that you want to get, and they have been with me for that long. It was always, I ask, y'all want to play? Yes, sir. Do you want to play? Yes, sir. Three of your guys step up, who are they? Got two. Connor Thrash, Bryce Hinton, hung out with us for three, Connor would have been four, but he injured his shoulder one year. I'd like to recognize Landon Thrash, his brother, played for me for three years and that when he finished playing, he has actually coached with us for the last three years. So I couldn't run him off. Played with me for three years and then decided he wanted to help us coach. Okay, I'm trying, to be honest with you, I'm trying to retire. I'm 64 years old, I've been doing it a long time, but if Ozark raises a World Series back, I will continue to coach. It's something that I love, I enjoy doing, I meet some fine young men, and I would like to say one thing. Want to talk too long? We have one young man that's not here tonight that would have been, but for a special reason. He went basic training today.
Wow.
National Guard. So we got one that's going to go off and serve our country, and we've had several in the past that's done that, we have a lot of them. First responders over the years that are still continuing to help, a lot of them have actually worked here in the city. So, you know, it's not only a baseball program, it is a family. There's things that I will never forget, and I hope they never do. I can tell by the response tonight, I told them it was not mandatory, and you see the outcome. So there's a little bit of respect somewhere. Guys, I appreciate it.
All right, hold up. Y'all, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Good job, guys. And David, we have an additional citizen recognition this evening as well.
This is an appreciation award presented to Ms. Carol Taylor in recognition for the profound cultural significance and the jubilant spirit that permeates our community during the Ozark Crawlhead Music Festival. This plaque stands as a testament to the enduring legacy started by Carol Taylor in 2006. The Ozark Crawlhead Music Festival subway every April is a vibrant mosaic of colors and sounds and flavors that capitalizes the rich tapestry of our community. The city of Ozark extends its deepest gratitude to Carol Taylor, whose vision, dedication, and unwavering enthusiasm created this festival that is still growing strong and inspiring future generations to embrace our cultural heritage. Please come forward. And we were going to do this at the Crawlhead Festival, and I'm so glad that we didn't because I was at the 2006 first one you had, how many people were you saying was there?
300. Maybe 300.
Maybe 300, you held it at Eagle Stadium. This last year, some people called it mobile mapping and some people call it data, mobile data collection, but we pinged the downtown area and there was 15,900 visitors inside that.
That's wonderful. Y'all done great since I left.
It's all because of your vision.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
But you did a great job of that, and we, we just need a few more Carol Taylors at Ozark coming up with these ideas.
I'm not surrounded, I should say this.
Go up here, send them to the building. Y'all stand up and have a look.
Thank you. I want to say, I'll just say something while he's walking away. I enjoyed doing that, what we did back in 2006, and we had some great help. I think Denise Alice was here then, and after Denise left, Laura Bruce came in, and I had Mickey Snell, I had to tell what to do, and then Stevie Carroll, I had to tell what to do. But anyway, it was great. I enjoyed my time from Ozark. I was born in Ozark, raised a lot here with Root Enterprises, but I really enjoyed my time here, and I'm going to bring the foot down here yet. I tried and COVID came in, I had a bus coming down here, but we're going to try, this time we'll have maybe 15,000 people. Thank y'all.
So at this time, we will review the agenda for the regular meeting. So after a possible greater political agents, the minutes from the regular council meeting is held on July 6, 2024, already approved or reviewed. Councilmember, do you have any questions about those minutes? Item number five is a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance and setting a public hearing on August 20th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. And those properties are 96 Lowery Road, 146 Tenured Avenue, and 674 Moon Street. Councilmembers, do you have any questions on those? Yeah, so if you were select with those, those directly today. Item number six is setting a public hearing on August 20th, 24th at 5:00 p.m. for the rezoning of Parker Drive lots from I-1 to RH. So, would you like to come and talk about this?
What am I covering?
Hit six and seven. Combine together.
Okay, item seven is the rezoning of Phoenix Street from I-1 to RH as well.
All those properties are joined again. So we're going to change the I-1 to RH. But what we're going to do, I got to get all that resolved. The one guy's going to put a house up there eventually, they just want to use it for going development, they just want to hunker and keep it, waste lands and trees and stuff.
Okay, councilmembers, do you have any questions on that rezoning? Thank you so much. Item number eight stands confirming the cost of a weed lane at 199 Magolia Street and 227 Riverwood Street. Councilmembers, do you have any questions on those? And Brett confirmed that they were cut and.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have no question.
Yes, sir.
I knew this on this as my guys, lawn care and property management took care of the service here.
Yes, I believe.
But it doesn't say where they're from.
They're, they're from Oklahoma.
They're from Oklahoma? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Of the employees that have been. Thank you. Item number nine is a contract lease with KFC for a street sweeper. So Ryan, would you like to speak on that?
Of course, y'all approved about three years ago for us to purchase this street sweeper. This time, of course, back then, we put it on a three-year lease so that we wouldn't be stuck with a street sweeper like we were previously for 20 years. So the leases, I guess, ended in jeans, jeans, and so when we did the agreement back three years ago, we had, where they had a guarantee buyback, so there will buyback in blue note, and so we're asking you to, and this was approved in a budget that you passed, but we're just asking you to approve us from ahead and do this transaction.
Just going to swap out?
We're going to swap out, but the lease payment, actually, because I think it's 90, it's 90 days after the lease payment. Somewhere, it, it will be towards the end of next year, so even though we just swap it out now, we actually won't make the payment until next budget year, but it just kind of fell out.
So it's a newer sweeper, too?
Springing it.
Oh.
And it's, and it's on lock. They've held, we had it held now for probably a month and a half, but yeah.
So one, one more, Ryan, because item 10 is an agreement for CEI services.
All right. Yeah, and this is going to be for the service road, so Polly is going to file the inspection services for that project, which should be kicking off.
Pretty soon.
Pretty soon, yeah.
Okay, if you can catch my review, any additional questions for Ryan on that one? Item number 11 is a contract agreement with Watson Auction and Realty LLC. Director Ward, would you like to discuss that one?
A few meetings ago, y'all had a resolution for us to circle us weapons, guns, and loan guns, and what we'd like to do under this contract with Watson Auction, to auction the weapons off, we had tried going through different gun companies and they were basically giving us 50 cents on a gun, and I checked with other agencies and they said the best way to do is find somebody that auctioned off guns, and everybody doesn't do that, so it's a very limited thing to do. And, and we found him, and one reason it's so important, you just can't just sell guns, it's a lot of work to, you have to make sure the person finds it and buys it, a lot of paperwork has to be filed with federal government, and he would take care of all of that, and y'all see the lease, and you know, he's going to do it for just 15% on what he sells, at the cost of what he built them off at, and a lot of chiefs I talked to around the state have been very, very successful in, in auctioning off these guns.
Okay. Councilmembers, does anyone have any additional questions with contracting with them to?
Father, fifty.
And that's how, we don't come back, when we get these out of the way, we will come back, there's going to be some more, that's just for the initial of us getting rid of, and understanding the guns that we are auctioning off is the ones we can, is some that we can't, such as got filed numbers filed off of, those are going to have to be destroyed, so these guns that we actually can't sell by federal regulations.
What, that we've gotten from, like seized properties?
Seized property, people just surrender them, guns that for some, they were reasons that came in our possession, and we tried finding people to give them back, and you just couldn't, so the judge ordered, he condemned them, and so you can't hold forever, and some of them have been out in that room forever.
Wow, okay.
So they are stored here?
Yes, sir. And safe. Don't try to break anything.
Yes, any additional questions for Chief Ford on that one?
Just wanted to note, they are charging us 15%, but they also charge the buyer 2%. And if they do it online, that's an additional 5%. So if it goes through, that's theirs. And they collect everything, and then they just.
We like that. Thank you. Item number 12 is an ordinance to amend voting requirements for state council meetings. Tony Adams?
Okay, Chief, is that Joe Watson?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
In addition to sending guns, he makes a great Santa Claus. If you want to book it for a party, he can bring the guns and. That's about Santa Claus. This is, this came up, this ordinance came up several meetings ago where you have a procedural ordinance that says that every council member must vote on every issue that comes before the council. So in that particular case, I do not believe that you can be compelled to violate the law. So this ordinance here will amend your procedural ordinance to say that you have to vote, a council member has to vote on every issue before the council except on matters that would be unlawful according to the ethics law.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you have any additional questions? The only thing I would like to state is that doesn't mean that because this makes me uncomfortable, that's not necessarily an ethics violation. There has to be a clear conflict for there to be an ethics violation, not because, well, someone's got to get mad at me and I have to see them every day, like that's not, but I mean, but we all, we've all been in the meetings and all in the meetings and stuff like that, so we know that. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, this would simply be where a vote would be, would cause that council member to be violating the law.
Yes.
You still have a lot of things that come before you that you probably would not like to vote on, neighbors and friends and things like that. This does not cover that at all.
My question is, when you say vote, okay, an extension is also a vote.
That's the open.
Okay, now, in section 60 of the Rules of Procedure from Alabama League, and this is about council needing procedures, that is, it makes the statement that a council member has the right to change his or her vote up to the time the vote is found unpassed. After that, the vote can be changed only by permission of the Senate, which may be given by general consent. And here's the point made here, while it is the duty of every member who has an opinion on a question to express it by a vote, the member cannot be compelled to do so. Roberts Rules of Order revised the 75th anniversary edition. Now that's what I have obtained regarding that.
Well, that's what Roberts Rules of Order said, that you had, this prior capsule is voted to make this in the form of an ordinance.
But now the local law cannot supersede state law.
Well, this Roberts Rules of Order is not a state law.
Right, understood.
Yes, sir. I don't know of any law that this conflicts with. I do, I do think that standing alone to say that you have to vote on everything was not proper, and that's why this changes to be made.
Now, I just found the other one I was looking for. This is section 60 regarding voting. Section 68 says, "No provision in Alabama's statutes compels a council member to vote upon every issue called to question by the council. If a quorum is prevalent and the question requires a certain vote to pass, if one member refuses to vote and the required vote is one shot, the measure fails." Now that's Anderson, Anderson versus Davis, 13, SO 331, Alabama, 1893. And so, it said that no.
Did you see that date of?
Can be compelled to vote.
Look at the date of that case.
Yeah, late Alabama, 1893. But our constitution is one of the oldest in the nation.
Well, that's, that's not a constitutional right.
Been amended, so.
I'll check into it.
Right. Now that comes out of the league, Alabama League, basically.
Basically, y'all just do, say we're supposed to vote unless we have conflict measures on the vote.
Now, constitution.
If I'm going to gang some or whatever, it's not because I don't want to vote for my neighbor to have to cut his yard.
There you go.
You don't ride a fence on that, you got to vote one way or the other.
Well, we, we operate under a rough route, as the board has with, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, and back to the first one I read, it states, "While it is the duty of every member who has an opinion on a question to express it by a vote, the member cannot be compelled to do so." Now that's what the league is saying.
I will check into this.
It's related to the Roberts Rules of Order.
Well, Roberts Rules of Order is a procedural.
Yeah, understood.
And this, this is an exception to it that you have passed in former administrations. You pass that as an exception to the Rules of Order.
And it may be, or is it unfair to say that maybe we overstepped our bounds when we had our local procedure supersede what state procedure may say? That's, that's my question.
Hey, so even if, so even, I would also go back to the beginning of that statement that you said, where it says, "While it is the duty of everyone to vote."
Right.
The.
Cannot be compelled to vote.
While I do think that's right, I think it's because it's in the spirit of you shouldn't vote if it is an ethics violation.
Not, not so much ethics, but if something comes before the council, when that, when a council member or some council members are not presenting enough information to make an informed decision on that, which is what I was not given at one time, and that is the reason why I abstained, because the information, I wasn't given enough information to make an informed decision on something before me. I didn't vote for, I didn't vote again. I abstained because I didn't have enough knowledge to make a yes or a no vote. If I had been provided enough information regarding that, I would have been yay or nay.
I, I don't think.
Well, I think that goes back to the heated discussion that we had about people signing up beforehand to let us know what they're bringing before the council so that we would have enough information, and it was turned down. That goes back to that.
Do, do, do what other?
Yes, it does, because we would have had, we would have known beforehand what they were bringing to us, and we would have been able to do our research or ask them questions while they were here so that we could gather the information that we needed to make an educated, informed decision.
But also, that particular instance, that, that's, that's the one where you did, but it just didn't breathe, you know, like the email didn't come through or, you know, it was presented, but, but that's, but that's not your funeral there. I do understand your question.
And I would.
Asking if the previous council that enacted this ordinance years ago, prior to any of us, was overstepping requiring everyone to vote.
I wasn't referencing, referencing the situation that you just mentioned, I was referencing something that was given in our agenda where not enough information was provided on that item for me to make an informed decision. It wasn't about people in order to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm past that. I'm back to.
That would be to raise a point of order to postpone or delay the vote. That would be saying, I don't have enough information, I will raise a point of order here that we need to have additional time to consider. So it's not a matter of not voting, it's a matter of having time to do it, but you can raise that in a corner of order.
And also, if you don't have enough information on the, from the agenda, you can always pick up the phone and call before meeting.
But to be honest, that was already raised, it was raised early on because one member of the council, Davis, who made the motion, he tabled it 12, 16 times.
As we got more.
More information. I won't go into discussion.
I feel like a lot of our info, when we feel like we don't have enough information, we end up, we do end up tabling it. So we have any additional question about this particular ordinance, which in essence rolls back?
My brother, I just go forward and say that I would recommend that we table this one until such time that we can get more information, and that, because the attorney said he was looking.
Well, let me, let me give you the history of the, of the every council member needs to vote. needs to vote. If you got to the point, back in the fifties, sixties, even back in the forties, and up to many, just a few, thirty, forty years ago, uh, some councils became deadlocked because of personalities, uh, next door neighbors, uh, things of that nature, where people were just not voting, and therefore, the duties of the council, uh, were just not being fulfilled. And this was rampant all over the state. The people were elected to the council, and they didn't want to vote against the, uh, some reason, uh, they had a personal opinion, and they went with their personal opinion rather than, um, analyze it on behalf of the cities. And there were many, many cities that were actually deadlocked. I mean, they just, they couldn't do anything because people were not voting on their various ordinances one way or the other. And, uh, so this, this is where that particular ordinance came in. And, uh, it, yes, it's harsh, it's strict, but it's, uh, and that's why I suggested we at least amend it to say that it, that that cannot make you violate the law. And that's what this amendment, that's all it's saying.
It's just keeping you from riding the fence. I don't wanna make a yes or no decision, so I'm just not going to vote, I'm only abstaining. That's, that's exactly what it's for.
Now, I think...
I think we're put here to vote on items we should vote.
To, to give you a, a good example, and I think to go back to, but let's go back to item number eight.
Yes.
Okay, if you notice on item number eight here, and I, I asked a question about it being, uh, there was no address that I saw. But then, as I looked further, after I had asked that question, if you notice on the invoice up in the top left-hand corner, it gives P.O. Box nineteen eighty-seven, Ozark, Alabama, my lawn guy.
Okay.
Well, P.O. Box eighteen, nineteen eighty-seven is the address for City Hall. So, my question is, is my guys, are they working in City Hall?
Mm-hmm. I'm up to City Hall. In the City Hall?
Right, my guys lawn, current property management, are they...
Somebody's south of City Hall, don't worry.
So, I said, "My guys lawn, current property management has an address..."
No, 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 no.
...in City Hall.
No, are you talking about the, where it says my lawn, where it says the City of Ozark invoice?
I got this.
Well...
I got this, all right, too. Here's what we have to do. So, when we do a weed leave, we have to send this to the county. So, this invoice is generated by us in order to send to the county so that they can apply it to the property tax. That's all that is. The, the cost of the repair was two hundred dollars, for the cost of the, of the weed being cut was two hundred dollars, and we have a two hundred dollar admin fee that's attached to that. And so, we create that invoice...
Well, he won't vote for it, he's big believe.
Yeah, they, they live in Ozark.
Okay, well, in the top corner where you're at, just four above that, it says P.O. Box nineteen eighty-seven, but lower it says my guy lawn.
But also, right above it, on that line, it's a City of Ozark invoice, which is why it has...
Right, understood.
We, we are creating this invoice to send to the county.
Right.
That's why at bottom it says, "Please make the checks payable to the city of Ozark."
And I was just asking for an address where the lawn, did the company reside, and I was told over.
Yeah, there, there is.
Okay. But now, also, um, we have another problem here, because on that, on that invoice, it's got no really level of two thousand twenty-two. Why are you carrying such an old date?
Just didn't change.
Okay, so maybe that, that's one of the dates, or we gonna vote on it, though? We basically, today's the day.
Let me see.
Yeah, 'cause the, the, where it shows the date, we can see their invoice to us on seven ninety-two twenty-two.
But, but it originated on normally the two thousand twenty-two.
There, 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 there is.
I'm, I'm looking at the invoice.
I know, that's what he created to send to the county.
In twenty-two.
No, I'm sure that it probably was created back in twenty-two, but they have not rejected any invoices that we've sent to them thus far.
You're wearing...
So, that's our, so that's our internal...
That is, that is, that was on his invoice, he sent to the county. This is the guy's invoice right here, saying that.
Now, I'll tell you what we'll do, since we haven't sent this to the county yet, we will get that changed, and we will get enough date, date on it, so that it's in, in line with what it is.
Okay.
But I need those approvals to not, in order to do that.
Okay, so now, we're, so, but we're back to the amending the voting requirements, because right now, we're about, we are required to vote yes or no on everything.
Not, not yet.
But we are, but we are, that's the old ordinance, that's, that's the reason this is here before us.
We had no approval.
No, 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 it's, it's old one is already enacted, so, because this one is rolling that one back to say that if there's an ethics violation that, that we are aware of, then we can, we can abstain from that so that we don't violate the, you know, any sort of ethics rule. But what we're saying is, there's already a rule enacted, like, there's already an ordinance enacted that we have now been made aware of that requires us to vote, so we were trying to roll it back. Now, I understand Councilman Jackson's point is that he wants to roll it back completely and just as, as the ordinance, so that what it is, what he feels is in line with just plain Roberts Rules of Order, correct?
I, I read what it said, I'm not, he did. It was what the procedure's called for.
So, but the old ordinance is still enacted.
I, I would just vote on this right here tonight, instead of just keep discussing. We just, just vote on this board that we got right here, we done it.
Yeah, and if it's a yes, it's a yes, and if it's a no, it's a no. But right now, we are under a set of rules that says we have to guess or no everything.
Regardless.
Regardless.
I saw what China was putting out, won't vote from us, you're violating, that's all we do.
That's what we're gonna fix ourselves.
We gonna settle basic problems, you know, and I'm gonna make money on getting those under, buying or something, you know, that's all we do, so. It's real simple.
This administration has operated under, the current board says twenty-twenty.
Incorrectly.
We do...
Yes, incorrectly. We have been following what we believed was it, but when we found out it wasn't, that's why this is before us.
Wait, in one year, the new administration may see otherwise.
So, we don't wanna vote on anything, and everyone has to vote yes or no for everything? Because just because you weren't made aware of a rule doesn't mean that we can keep violating it. I, that's, that, I guess that's where I'm like, well, now that we know that's the way it's written, am I just gonna let everybody keep doing whatever? Am I gonna force, like, if we have something for downtown, am I gonna force Leah to vote even though it's an ethics violation, if it's something to do with her business? I don't wanna do that. And, but now that we know that that's the way that that's written, that's the reason for the rollback. Am I incorrect in understanding this?
Absolutely.
I am, okay, I am incorrect?
No, no, you are right.
Okay, okay. Okay, I understand.
You're, you're absolutely right.
Right, and that's what we're trying to roll, that's what we're trying to roll back. Now, I understand your point, you wish to roll it back even further.
Yes, that, that's what, but that's not before you tonight. I thought, when I prepared this, I thought I was doing the council a big favor, you did, so that's why I'm okay with it.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
But now, and then now, the question is, he would like to see it further?
Further, I, I understand that.
Yes.
My question is not regarding ethics violations. My question is regarding anything that come before this council, that a member has a right to not be compelled to vote yes or no. He can abstain if he or she so wishes.
I understand that you feel that way, but right now, the way that that ordinance was enacted years ago, we are not following that.
Then my question becomes, are we following Roberts Rules of Order?
We have amended Roberts Rules of Order.
We have said that in our council...
But can we amend something that would supersede?
Yeah, I mean, anybody.
Change, change that all back.
We don't even have home rule, home rule locally, we have to go through the legislation to get a good thing passed, this is what I have to vote for.
But what this particular thing is denied, we're fine with it here.
But we can do our own procedural, so that's the, so, so the question, because I guess it's gonna be whatever it is we vote.
If we all abstain from voting...
Every time.
Then we are breaking our own rules.
And that's what can happen. It's only in cases where a member's not provided enough...
No, in any case ever, anytime you have said, or I have said, or anybody else has ever said, "I abstained," we are breaking our own internal rules that someone in the past set for us, and so therefore, we are trying to say, "Let's not do that."
So, what we're also saying is that the mayor, since he, uh, just authority, can bring anything before us with no documentation, uh, to, to give us enough substance to vote on it, and we still gotta vote yes or no.
Yes, yes, that's correct. That is absolutely correct. Because the way that's written, right now, we have to, we are suppo, like, according to the ordinance, everyone has to vote yes or no at all times, and you're, you're right, I don't agree with that.
I, I think we all should take the lead on this one before we make a vote.
Okay, which is, which is fine, but here's the thing, if we table this, you are not allowed to say, "I abstained," anything until we get this resolved. Which, so, so I would like to offer a suggestion, okay? Uh, you have given some compelling evidence, and we can ask our attorney to research that a little bit more, to see if we are doing anything. However, if we pass this tonight, we can at least abstain for an ethical violation.
Probably is.
And it's all, which we normally do anyway, but we're not contradicting our own rules doing it. And yes, I agree, we have been breaking our own rules, but we weren't aware of it, and still, it was brought before us, that we are breaking our own rules, hence the thing being presented tonight. So, that's why I'm saying, let's just go ahead and get this passed, so that if somebody needs to abstain for an ethical reason, that it's done. And then we can request, can you, can you double check, especially for the, the reasons that Councilman Jackson has come before us? And, and if he comes back and says, "You're right, you have to follow Roberts Rules of Order and supersede," then we can roll back and go, "Council members just have to follow Roberts Rules of Order Edition X Y Z, written in eighteen ninety-three," and then that'll be fine, and then we'll, but I'm not believing that's gonna happen, but that can happen, whatever's unearthed, why is it asking me that? Is that okay? Yes, no? Okay, that's why I'm, I'm trying to protect us from breaking our own rules.
That's on the side, you're like, oh, man.
I'm on his person.
Okay, okay. But I do understand your, your, your concern, Councilman Jackson, please don't think I don't, but I do think stepping it back so that at least this is covered is good. All right, so next, or do we have any additional comments on that one?
No.
Okay, all right. Uh, item number thirteen is a purchase request to resurface the basketball courts at Open Everett Park. Ozzy, would you like to come speak on that?
Yes, absolutely. Hi, everybody. Uh, so, the courts at Open Everett Park have been, to be resurfaced for quite a few years now, and, uh, thanks to Mr. Ryan Campbell for drafting the votes, and thanks to Mr. Poyce Peters for funding money to finally be able to do it. So, everybody's okay with it? It's gonna cost around fifty thousand dollars to surface the two courts, and, uh, I think it'll be a beloved investment in our community.
When you say resurface, you can say a zone very tight, you know, if it re...
They're taking everything, and pouring everything, like, fresh concrete.
Forty-five dollars.
Eighty-nine, if it re... Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Uh, do you mind, do you have, do we have any kind of, like, when it goes through, do you know what the timeline would be?
I think the contractor said that he'd be, he'd be start right away.
Okay.
Well, what this is, is we're going to take up asphalt, and then he's going to pour it in.
Makes sense.
Would that the case, would all be good?
Yeah.
Okay. And council members, do you have any additional questions for Ozzy?
No, that's great.
Okay. All right. Item number fourteen is an easement agreement with the Alabama Power Company. Mayor, would you like to speak on that?
Yes, I know the power's trying to make the downtown area more reliable, so they're wanting to reduce the residential load that's tying, uh, into downtown, so they're basically gonna come across here with a line, put a pole here, jump across the road, and tie into the, uh, over the ocean, it's just, you know, something they need to do because of the load.
Council members, do you have any additional questions on that easement?
No.
Thank you. Item number fifteen is a contract for alcohol beverage service at the Holman House with Alcalazza Restaurant. Mayor, would you like to speak on that?
Yes, this is basically the same agreement that, uh, the Holman House Board had before we, uh, took over the house, and the only difference is, we asked Kevin and Dan to look at it and make an allowance there for when we do things there where we want to give alcohol beverages away, uh, so, uh, he's basically spelt it out in here that he will do it at his cost, and, uh, it's got some other billing, uh, requirements there, like, when he provides a bartender and that kind of thing, but it just, it just makes it, uh, just like the so-called general reception, uh, we needed that in there to be able to do it.
Council members, do you have any additional questions for Mayor on that one?
The whole thing, I'm asking, was this offered to anybody else, anybody, or Alcalazza or one that had the opportunity? They had it for several years, and I didn't, I didn't know if we'd ask anybody else if they would.
So, what would preclude, uh, Blue Agave or Benchmark or anyone else coming requesting if someone was having, eating at Holman House, and they show them to serve their parents?
They can do it.
It's one license per location. It is, it's one license per location.
In that way, if anybody got it.
Yeah, we forgot, we didn't know.
But, but did we, again, I think, Councilman, did we offer it out as a fee, so that, you know, we could see what, did we get it from everybody?
No, we didn't, at this point, we didn't. The general reception is next week, we need to pass it now, Alcalazza, and they've had it for years.
I understand that, but even if last week, I mean, we meet every two weeks or more or less, we could have offered it to them, to other businesses, just to...
Oh, no, it's on my table.
I, I, I don't think we would.
I just wonder how.
They serve as citizens, I mean, not to just serve one business.
I do, I do agree with that, but, but I also see the mayor's point, that Alcalazza has been the one that has held that, and they also held the one at the Civic Center as well, when, and if I, if I remember correctly.
They do.
Whenever we did put it out initially, none of the other businesses in town were willing to do it, because they're having to have paid that license out of there.
We're paying the license fee, basically, but did we offer that to these businesses in twenty-twenty-four? What you're talking about is something that occurred in, what, twenty-twenty, or twenty-twenty-one? Okay, this is a new day in time, I'm just concerned that the other businesses would say, "Well, you didn't offer that to me."
But don't think about lately, you catered and stuff, or those other businesses, don't do cater.
Yeah, I, I, I'm... Yeah, I, I, I'm looking at it as sort of a monopoly, because they got.
Too many local counties. Councilman Jackson, this came up two weeks ago, after our last meeting. We had to get this resolved because their license expires. We got to have this license if we're going to have the commanding general and his staff there provide alcohol Monday night. It's as simple as that.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that. I just have a problem when we didn't offer it to other businesses.
The time constraints is a lot, that's a lot. But next time, we can, we can do it.
I don't think, like, emails came so fast that where the digital was fast.
I do, I do agree with that, but also, we've had this on the agenda since last Thursday, when he emailed to us, so that also could have been asked at that time. Which would have given everyone all weekend to say, okay, we've had it on there, but here's what if somebody else was able to offer, here's what somebody else was able to offer.
For future reference, I would like to add that, um, you know, um, maybe some sort of a bidding, um, like a lottery. We could, once a year, um, you know, put the Civic Center, the Holman House, you know, our city properties that require beverage service, like a lottery, every business that's interested in obtaining a license for that year, draw their name out of the hat, let them pursue it, and then, um, the next year, you know, need somebody else to, for future reference. But I understand, so. And it is a hassle, speaking from, you know, my own business, I hold two liquor licenses in Ozark, and they are a hassle. There's extra insurance you gotta have. And so Alcalozi has just been doing it, but they, this, they're in the business of catering, and this is what they do.
That is a great suggestion. So is that something that we could possibly look forward to and say, tell all businesses if you would wish to do that, so they will.
We could do it for next year.
Just do it for one year.
Yeah, yes, it is a good one.
And there's a chance that we're gonna want to take over ourselves. Yeah, that, that's the.
Right, that's the other thing.
That's where you can have other people involved in it, is, is to do what the mayor said, let, let the license be in the city of those parks.
I think Donovan does that, is that correct?
Right, and we're, I'm planning on doing that. I've asked Joe to start it on the city.
It's actually a better business decision, I think, to have the city own the license.
Those are the times, it's trying to, you didn't have a choice on this one.
Understood.
The actual licenses, as you know, all expire. The current licenses for everyone expires, uh, the end of September, the last day of September. So Ozark to get a license right now, it would expire in a few weeks. So, uh, logic would be, if, if that's your desire on the recommendation of the mayor, that, that, to apply for a license starting, uh, October the first of this year, and then you can have your events where you want to have your events. You would be the licensee.
All right, are there any additional comments on, uh, this particular contract? Or? Item number 16 is a purchase request, uh, recep, for the reception of the incoming commander of the ordinance. So Mayor, Mayor, would you like to speak on that?
Sure, I had Joe prepare a letter, uh, and it basically says that if we determine that it's for a public purpose, that, uh, council can vote on that, and we also printed out a section from the Leaky Municipalities that says it's up to the city council to make a, make a factual determination, uh, does the event serve as a public purpose? So that's basically what we're asking you to do, for what we can pay for the general perception.
Council members, do you have any, uh, questions or comments on, uh, a group of purchase requests? Does everyone understand what, what, what the meaning of that is?
Yeah. Our relations with Fort Rucker are definitely totally.
Very important, and I'd say highly.
Okay. So with that, I will now go out into the audience. Are there any department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the last item that we were just discussing, um, I feel obligated that I need to, um, even after opening a payment box and the whole ordinance that was talked about earlier. When you come across something, I think it needs to be, you know, made aware, and that's kind of, that's what I did. Um, so, please be patient with me. I did a write-up on it, so. So on July 2024, I received an email from Petco requesting approval for $1,500 for a reception for the incoming commander of the ordinance to sell on Monday, August 12th, at the Holman House. I replied, it's $1,000 for work due to our community relations budget line, I'm at 80% of the budget. Later that day, I've been reading an article in the Alabama Municipal Journal titled, "Can a municipality serve food at a meeting?" Which drew my attention into the discussion about the event. I'd like to read that article real quick. So it says, "Can a municipality serve food at a meeting? Attorney's General opinions have established that food and beverages can be served when they are incidental to the meeting. Food and beverages cannot be the reason for the meeting. Public funds may be used to pay for meals and or refreshments served at business meetings when the meals are directly related to the business of the entity and the meals and refreshments are incidental to the meeting. In order for meals to be incidental for the meeting, the primary purpose of the gathering must be to have an official meeting at which business is conducted, not a social gathering at which food is provided. Refreshments may not be provided at a break during a meeting that does not extend to lunch or mealtime." That is Attorney's General Opinion 2010-076. So shortly after reading the article, Heather comes into my office and I ask her a specific question after reading the article to her. Is the reception a social gathering or is it a business meeting? Her response was, "Social gather." My response to him was that I don't believe we can use public funds for this event. On July 17th, 2024, I received an email from Heather Cohen stating she had done research on the Alcalozi could be as found as website and found an Attorney General opinion and believed that basically it looked like the city council would need to approve the expenditure. And I believe that's what Attorney General's, uh, letter was based on, which was an Attorney General opinion back in 2003. I pulled the entire Attorney General opinion for both and sent a copy to Heather, asking for a discussion after she had reviewed both. So the mayor and Heather come into my office for a discussion regarding purchase. I believe that purchase would not be allowed, and they believe that it could. In the discussion, I find out that there are other wire traffic cities hosting like events in Dofen Enterprise in Daleville for the incoming general. I offered to contact the city clerk in Daleville, who is a 20-plus-year veteran, to find out how they are hosting the event. Upon contacting her, they are not hosting the event. The Chamber in Daleville is hosting the event. I went on to ask how they would host an event where business was not taking place, and the response was that public funds did not be used for that, that they would bring food prepared by the employees if that was needed. So of which, I informed Heather of my findings. Thinking that was the end of it, I did not proceed in further. And then, I received an email from Heather requesting it to be added to the city council agenda with the letter from Joe Adams presented. So now we've expensed additional funds from all your speeds to prepare said letter. I did reach out to the Alabama League of Municipalities League Council, Kayla Beck, regarding the request. His opinion is that it was a social gathering and that it was not a direct public benefit, because it is by invite only. No business would be conducted, and because of these reasons, public funds should not be used.
The way around that is to simply allow the Chamber of Commerce to pay it, and we can fund that, we can give that money back to the Chamber of Commerce. We do it every day.
That is not allowed.
So you're telling me we're not gonna fund a commanding general event on Fort Nofa cell?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, gentlemen, absolutely not. I know that y'all probably have gone over this.
I know nothing about this, really, to be honest.
No, I, I mean, I'm just saying, I, well, because y'all said y'all, because it is that he said y'all had discussed it.
Right.
So I didn't, I, I don't know if this is what is coming to a head here. But please remember, my number one rule is just keep order and civility. I understand if, 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 if y'all don't agree, I understand that.
That's the reason we asked the attorney for his opinion.
Well, as CFO, I thought my opinion mattered, but apparently it does not.
I don't, I don't disagree with either of you. We did ask our attorney, and he asked the league of municipalities, so now it seems we are at an impasse. I don't disagree with your opinion that if the Chamber were to host it, it's not saying that we can't assist with whatever event of that. But, but my question is, so, how do we, how do we fund things like Prada if those are just social events?
Who's funding Prada?
We fund Prada, Leisure Services does.
Well, we get grants for that.
But we don't totally, we don't bottom it.
I, I would like to ask, Sadist, were you aware of the Attorney General opinion of 2010? And that was not in your letter, and that's the only reason I had.
Attorney General's opinion of 2003 has not been changed.
So, once again, I'll ask, were you aware of the 2010 Attorney General?
I looked at all of the Attorney General opinions. The, the situation is, when you, when you, you got to go back and look at the, the, the changes in the Constitution where now we are allowing our expenditures for private, of, of private businesses when there is a recognized public purpose. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you go merge the two, they, they may not merge. But right now, we are, we are doing economic development, giving private people tax money to come into Ozark. That's part of the constitutional amendments. The constitutional amendment now recognize the expenditure of public monies where there is a public purpose that benefits the city. I would think entertainment in general is a benefit to Ozark.
Yeah.
And you said Daleville, how's, how's Dofen based today? Did you answer?
I did not.
Okay.
I mean, I, I trusted Daleville, you know, clerk.
That's what Daleville deals with, you know, we've done this forever. I don't know why it brought this up, but try.
Because of what I read.
He just said, I mean, he wouldn't have even thought of it had it not been for the article that he just read his story.
Look, this is city council. I'm just trying to provide the same information that I am. Y'all can do what you want. I mean, it, it's there.
But, but.
Let me, let me say this. The Attorney General is not looking back at the Constitution and the evolution of the public-private relationships that are in the Constitution. In that particular case, we, we have, we, we're just, we're giving tax money back to, uh, to various places here in Ozark. They turn in their, 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 uh, sales tax, we give them back two cents. That's private. That's private property. Why do we do it? Because the Constitution says now we can do it, because it serves a public purpose. The public purpose doctrine is growing stronger and stronger, don't you think?
And in the letter, it does say, it is a, it is whether a public purpose, purpose is achieved is solely a city's responsibility. So to that, I do agree that it is our opinion that matters to whether this particular thing, whether it is classified as a social gathering, which I don't agree with, serves a public purpose. I think both things can be right at the same time. I think it can be, and, but it, it serves a public purpose. I think us having, I think us having dinner, even if it's over lunch, or like, even if it's not at lunch or whatever. I agree that there can be times when it isn't, but I, if, if you guys decide that it is, the attorney has said it is the council's responsibility to decide that.
I just think, I, I agree that strengthening our ties with Fort Nofa cell by welcoming the commanding general of the military base is very important. We want the soldiers to come to Ozark, and who's gonna recommend it? The top, go from the top down in the military structures. So if we have to make a donation to the Chamber of Commerce somehow, appropriation to cover it, then that's the way, you know, we gotta do what's right.
Why was that not working? I'm asking you.
Was that, I'm sorry?
Why would that not work if we, if the Chamber thinks more than we, we give it? Appropriation?
Because, I mean, you're, you're basically giving them the same money in order to fund the food. I, look, I mean, when it says in that article that it's not to be used for food.
They're sticking up a little bit. I said, "Oh, man." I'm willing to take the chance.
But I will say, one, I under, like I said, I understand that, but I also don't feel that the CFO should be attacked if the CFO is doing his job of trying to protect our funds and keeping us out of trouble. Now, if we go against his recommendation because we, we trust the attorney's opinion, that's our, that's our prerogative. But I don't want anyone to say, why are you trying to make it difficult? Because that's his job.
And, and, I'm.
Not that it's.
Couchy, man. Then you're based upon the economic development aspect that's, that's now solidified into our constitution. And therefore, for many, many years, we had, we couldn't spend a dime on private affairs. Didn't matter whether it was food or drink or, or clothing or whatever. We couldn't spend a dime until the legislature says, we're gonna pass this constitutional amendment, the lawyer ratified it, and now we have the opportunity to expand public monies on, on private matters and to enhance private citizens if it benefits the city and serves a public purpose. Uh, and, you know, giving sales tax back to, um, uh, back to Taco Bell, we said that served a public purpose, and it certainly does. That's getting more attention than anything. Having the general end is also economic benefit and public purpose, which I say is protected under the Constitution.
All right. So with that, are there any other department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items? Is there anyone in attendance that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening?
I know I usually always forget these things, but when we went to Chattanooga, the SARS Center, they did a cool thing with their, with one of their things they do. When they're alcohol, they have a booth that sells tickets for one price. And then you can just go, pick whomever you want and get your alcohol that way. Everyone gets a fair share of the proceeds at the end. There's no bigger than overview, sold more, this, that, and the other. It's just that they all take their digits up there and get their proceeds at the end. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in attendance that has any, oh, yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to make a tough statement, because I've been asking some citizens to ask this question, uh, going back to the Alcalozi and Holman House. The question that I would like to know as a citizen, is the city paying any money to Alcalozi for that service? And if so, I think it's still a bad precedent for the city to use city funds to sponsor alcohol.
So to answer that, let. So do you mean, do you mean above their regular service fees that they would charge anyone, or do you mean?
It's, it's the city paying this service fee to El Palacios.
A service fee. It's a cash bar. They have, yeah, they, the, the cash bar fee, which is the fee that also is the fee for El Palacio to, to the cash bar with AC or?
I was just supposed to say the city paying anything to help Palacios for their service.
Which would be that in the children.
It looks like we are paying those licensing fees.
Yeah, we've done that.
That's what I'm saying. He's not saying we don't pay.
Yeah, it's, we're paying the fees, let's see.
Well, the number four says, we'll pay the $750 licensing fee to El Palacio. Which is, see, this was an agreement with the Heritage Association when they were managing the Holman House. And they're not doing it anymore. That's the agreement that they had. So now the, you know, the contract states that the city will renew the current contract with El Palacio and the city will pay the $750 licensing.
We took over what the Heritage Association.
That's, that's the way the agreement is written, I wonder?
Yes.
And it's sort of been written, it was asked because it was other business was like that guy on this, if they knew the city was going to pay a service fee. And that's all I got.
And then while we speak on that, uh, in addition, if you look at the line, I don't know, but there, I'm going back. You know, a five-state organization, you have to be the city of the Holman House. I mean, Heritage Association doesn't exist. We'll pay $50 fee to El Palacio purely then.
Excuse me, the Heritage Association is, they still exist. They still have a bank account.
Mark, was that the, was that the organization that was going to be at the Holman House, not the city?
Yeah, that's the.
Whoever renewing the event, we're paying $50. Yeah, whoever, I mean.
Whoever.
The wedding, the wedding was there.
In this case, we're the city, basically, uh, we're hosting the event.
But, no, what they're talking, what he's talking about is, say, a wedding wants to be held at the Holman House. The city owns the Holman House.
Right.
So we paid the $750 for the licensing for them to host and be serving alcohol there. The organization, which would be the married couple, they would pay the $50 in the number five.
In this case, that would exist entertaining the general.
Yes, because it would be the city.
Right, be the city. So with that, you.
Well, I guess it would be divided up between the city and the chamber and the ODA because all three of them are.
City.
State, state is being hosted.
Thank you. Are there, sorry, I don't know. Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular this evening? So with that, I will go to final comments from the mayor.
First of all, I wanted to give a big shout out to the rec department during the World Game, or the World Series. Thought they did a great job. I talked to folks from Arkansas, South Carolina, a couple of people. Everybody was well pleased with the tournament. Uh, just thought it went extremely well. We had a lot of new people involved in that, so, uh, you know, it turned out really well. The Gem 60 tank pad that we're wanting to board, Ryan and him is going to start forming that up on Friday. Uh, the car wash out on the highway, they've probably taken applications on that. And the work we got was they have plenty of applications, which is a good sign. The USDA building has all their signage up. Bell helicopter, we got a little bit of an issue there. Uh, even though we had a meeting in December of '23 and said we were not renewing the lease on the property. Uh, Bell has continued to feel like it is still leased and even told the person we're working with as of last night that, um, they wanted an agreement in the sales contract that said they still had access to the city property. Of course, they've, they've reached out to their attorney and they told them they couldn't do that, that that was between Bell and us. And if we went back and looked, Holly and I, along with Bell and JLL, which is a real estate company, had a meeting in January 24th where we told them again we were not renewing the contract. We thought we had returned a couple of checks. They just slipped by us and we didn't go. Joe, my question to you is that we need to send back the payments that they've made to us since January of '24? Okay. Um, I think that's the right thing to do and we need to, uh, not accept any more of them. And, I mean, they're renting that property for $600 a month. We already rented part of that in August of last year to Thera. So they're actually, they talked about today when we could put it in their contract where they lease it to the new company. They're getting it from us for nothing because they were posting these providing 200 jobs. And then they will turn into sublease it. It just, that makes no sense. I mean, Joe agrees with that 100%. Project here, the sporting goods company, they're in the process of hanging sheet rock. The Andrews apartment complex, we had to find one inspection today. Uh, find, found a couple of little things, but they're ready to start renting. So that's a good thing. For Taco Bell, you can see it's about framed up. We're looking to put sewer lining on it anytime. Of course, we've already talked about the general reception. Don't forget the USA Breakfast August 15. And speaking of Thera, um, I don't know how much we've communicated this with y'all, but a couple of months after we signed the agreement with them, they got pulled into a lawsuit and submitted public knowledge. They've been very open and honest with us about it from the beginning. But we are now, that's gone a gear. Uh, they had held up on doing some things because of this lawsuit. So they are actually, uh, you know, they have not met their requirements of the agreement. So Holly and I met with them today, very nice about it. They still think they're going to be able to move forward. But they also said if y'all have a real candidate come along for the building, give them two weeks and they would get out. We told them that we would let it ride, try to work through their process. They've done a lot of work to the building. But, um, if something comes along and Holly does have some prospects, we may be asking them to, to move out, you know, before we can fill the building. So I just didn't want that to be a surprise to y'all. The other thing is I know y'all love that Paper Joe Adams funeral is Thursday at 10 o'clock and I will be speaking at that funeral.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman and figure? Councilman Jackson? Councilman Perrault?
Hi, I'm a P. B. I. Z. G. R. V. I. Matthew Stagian. I've seen the, they have really got handy equipment out there. They've got a new scoreboard they got installed today. All of the LED lighting is up. Uh, they're bulldozing the turf right now. Again, they're ready to put the artificial stuff down. So it, it's, it's a work in progress and this is going to be so awesome. When they get that all fixed with that new track and everything, the new artificial turf field. I can't wait. Can't wait.
Councilwoman Marla?
Um, yes, I have a couple of things. Um, first of all, this Saturday, the downtown Ozark on the Square from 10 to 2 is the monthly second Saturday shopping, brunch and shopping event that the businesses get together and, uh, host together. So I would like to encourage everybody to come down and support, uh, shop small this weekend. And also, um, Short the Squirrel is a literacy program that's, you know, in the state of Alabama. And they were at the Boys and Girls Club recently and we had some of us that had attended that. Anyway, um, Ms. D., the Short the Squirrel representative, asked if, um, we as a council would present books to the listening school on their behalf. And they donated two books per child in kindergarten and preschool. One, I'm going to share with y'all tonight, one does No Hissy Bits. Super cute. And the other one is Mo Possum is Awesome. So I called this and they have 166 students, so we'll be taking over those books this week. And then the leftover, uh, Councilman Perrault is going to be contacting, um, Head Start. Columbus Club is, has a relationship with Head Start. So he's going to go in September and donate, um, enough books so that each of those children will also have two books in their hands. So literacy is very important and we're very proud to be able to assist in that effort.
Wonderful. I mean, you were.
Okay, I have one more. I just have one more thing. I think it does well for all of us to remember. I have the handbook. How they believe, recentities, mayors and council members. This is like my bible. It says, a council, and I just like to remind everybody, and the public should know too. A council member is an elected representative of municipal citizens who have placed their trust and confidence in him or her to express their will in hope or in part before the assembled council. By refusing to provide upon issues brought to question, the council member fails to perform an important responsibility. Of course, in certain cases, a council member is prohibited from voting by statutory restriction or an existing conflict of interest.
Thank you. I think that's very poignant and who knows, we'll have your handbook.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And for me, it was our city schools. The kids went back to school today.
Yay!
So I wish everyone a safe start to the school year. All right, so with that, I will bring this meeting to a close and the next meeting will start in three minutes. Again, this is a prayer led by Councilman and figure and a pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Lincoln.
Thank you. I'm here to help you explain all those things you've given us in relation to that. Lord, we ask you to just jive and say that we might from the city, Lord, that, uh, that they believe in right now. We always hope to be forth, Lord. Lord, we just pray for the world situation, Lord, so fragile right now with Israel, you know, over those countries. Or just waiting for opportunities, or, 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 I hope, we just ask to bring calm to those, those regions, Lord. For the best, bless the people that they were the Lord's one, two, heritage, Lord, and blood, and their tribe and culture. Just so devastated, there was everything to pay it. Lord, again, I just thank you for your blessing, mercy and your love. In Christ Jesus' name I pray.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on July 16, 2024. What are the wishes of the council?
Take a motion through the previous minutes from the previous meetings, July 16th.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on these minutes? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is to set the agenda for this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we set the agenda, adding number 17, a resolution declaring 1513 Lightview Road a public nuisance.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Do we have any additional discussion on setting the agenda as amended? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance and setting a public hearing. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance and setting a public hearing for August 20th, 24 at 5:00 p.m. and move this adoption.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is setting a public hearing on August 20th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. for the rezoning of, uh, some lots. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion to set a public hearing for August 20th, 2024, 5:00 p.m. for rezoning of Harper Drive lots I-1 to RH. And can I add the number seven in there too? This is basically the same thing?
Sure.
Okay, and also to set a public hearing for August 20th, 2024, 5:00 p.m. for rezoning of Beadham Street lots I-1, from I-1 to RH.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion on, uh, these public hearings for rezoning? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is a resolution confirming the cost of a weed lean. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution confirming the cost of a weed lean, 199 Magnolia Street and 227 Pirita Street.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this resolution? I will just make, I will just make sure that the beginning wishes have occurred. Okay. Uh, so with that, uh, all in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is a resolution for a contract lease for a street sweeper. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution, a contract lease with Cadence Bank for a street sweeper and move this adoption.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 10 is an agreement for services with Polly Inc. What are the wishes of the council?
I would like to view agreement for the city and our services with Polly Incorporated and move this adoption.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second. Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, Karen. Second. Do we have any further discussion on this agreement? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is a contract agreement with Watson Auction and Realty LLC. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we contract with, um, do you want to a contractual agreement with Watson Auction and Realty LLC for disposing of the, was it 550? 550 firearms.
I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this agreement? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is an ordinance to amend the voting requirements for city council meetings. So we do have to suspend the rules in consideration of an ordinance. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we suspend the rules.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to print my notes. Do we have any discussion on suspending the rules? All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is consideration of an ordinance. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce an ordinance to amend the voting requirements for city council meetings, move their approval.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this ordinance to amend voting requirements for city council?
Yeah, let's hear you speak on the ordinance again.
Let me speak on it? Sure, sure. So previously, it had come to the attention of the city council of Ozark that there had been an ordinance that every single council member has to vote yes or no to everything. And it had been unearthed lately that we had been ordinance, or that we had been violating our own ordinance because we were abstaining whenever we felt we had some sort of ethical conflict or something like that. Or if we felt that we didn't have enough information or anything like that. We were abstaining from voting. Well, it was brought to our attention that there was an ordinance on the books that we had to vote yes or no to everything. We were not allowed to abstain. So this is rolling. So this is rolling back that ordinance and saying that for an ethical violation, we are allowed to abstain.
But also, your sentence had was ethical, along with ethical violation, if you didn't have enough information.
No, that, I'm saying, this is when, when we were in the past, abstaining, abstaining for reasons, I'm just giving an example, that in the past, like, in this term, we have, council members have abstained for reasons such as, they felt they didn't have enough information, so they were abstaining. So this ordinance is just saying that for an ethical violation, we are allowed to abstain.
Or not enough information.
This, this ordinance just says, for an ethical violation, a conflict of interest. That is, that is what this particular ordinance is saying.
Since, he's the board.
All right, so is there any other discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is a purchase request to resurface the basketball courts at Open Everett Park.
Madam President, I approve the purchase request to resurface that basketball courts at Open Everett Park.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Sure.
Do we have any further discussion on this purchase request? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is an easement agreement with Alabama Power Company, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve an easement agreement with Alabama Power Company, move for its approval.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Sure.
Do we have any further discussion on this easement agreement? All in favor of passing this motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 15 is a contract for alcohol beverage service at the Holman House with El Palacio Restaurant, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the contract for alcohol beverage service at the Holman House with El Palacio Restaurant.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, do we have any further discussion on this contract? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 is a purchase request reception, for the reception of the incoming commander at Fort Mifflin, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve the purchase request for the reception for the incoming commanding general at Fort Mifflin, at $1,500.
Thank you, I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 17 is a public, declaring certain properties a public nuisance at 1513 Lakeview Road, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution declaring 1513 Lakeview Road a public nuisance, and move for its adoption.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on declaring this property a public nuisance? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. So with that, there be no further business, I'll go to the final comments from the mayor. Councilman and Ficker, Councilman Jackson?
One thing I would like to say here.
Yes, sir.
When you are making a board appointment.
Yes, sir.
If we could provide more information regarding the person before he.
Are you, are you saying, when you're, when each one of us is nominating someone, or people have stepped forward to say?
Information that you, whether it be the bow or what have you, provide more information. And, really true that I would like to see us make appointments for any given area of concern, regardless of what the board is, if, with people that have some experience in those areas, you follow me?
Can you be more specific for?
Yes, I don't think, it's kind of something, you wouldn't want to appoint somebody with the much, who has been involved in mechanics all their life, to start overseeing, say, I just said, a school board, you follow me?
Okay.
You should have some, we have boards where I've always been told, the person needs to have some knowledge of what's going on with that entity to be appointed, just like the zoning board, you know, or the planning business, I mean, you just don't want to take a person that has no experience and place them on those boards, because then they got to learn a new, or be told.
I would, I, at some point, to some, to some degree, I would agree with that, but also, every board I've ever served on, for instance, the Mary Hills Family Service Center Board, I was placed on that board because of my expertise, but at the time, the expertise didn't necessarily intersect with what Mary's, Mary Hill Family Service Center does on a daily basis.
Oh, I understand, you should have some knowledge about services.
But I didn't, and I was willing to learn.
Let's just say on the airport board, I wouldn't want to put someone on the airport board that doesn't know anything about airports, you follow me?
Well, so, so, it would, it would stand to reason that certain boards could.
That's what I'm getting at, certain boards you need.
But isn't that, isn't that our review anyway?
When you school board, you have people like Marys and Mary Hills on there, you, when you go to school, you've got a lot to learn, you've got to learn what they, I mean, everybody can't be an educator, don't know what they do.
I'm not speaking only in a specific board, I'm just overall.
I mean, if there was a top board that I had an organization with, I would want a mix of different backgrounds from people, because they're going to have different views and suggestions on how something would work, and you, you'd want to draw that, draw the differences for the people, when you're all going for the same.
Would you say the same thing for our city council? You would want everyone of all of the same backgrounds and everything, you wouldn't want to mix it.
We're not appointed, we're elected, that's a whole different problem. The citizens elect us, and I think we're appointed. We are the appointing authority for all of these boards, so you only got five mentalities involved in making the appointment. That's different than 14,000 citizens, or 8,000 that has an opportunity to cast a vote for you. Appointments, and elected, appointed official, elected official, that's not, you can't make that.
I'd like to say that I've been, just, you know, just becoming a city council member, I've been appointed to several boards that I have absolutely no clue, the one I'm on, I still don't know what they do, but I attend the meetings and I'm learning and I'm figuring it out, that's what we do, but we have been asking for resumes from every, if I'm not, since we had the last misunderstanding about a board, we have been getting resumes emailed to us. And turned in, yes.
Bios and stuff?
I'll just take the most recent board, that was, the school board was the most recent one, we had what, three or four bios and resumes emailed to us?
We had more.
But anyway, you know what I'm saying, we had several that were given to us. And I believe it all started this year.
Yeah.
Getting resumes, because in the past, they have never requested.
But it did set a good precedent.
I like the way we did this past time, it's giving you a better picture.
Which also is just what Councilman Jackson is, was.
I wouldn't put them, I wouldn't put them in candy.
Well, yeah, he fixed the oxygen chain, or the, right, mine. All right, that's him, okay, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harlow? I have no final comments, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, thank you. Do I have a second?
Any discussion?
Thank you, discussion, all in favor of returning, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously, a conference meeting to a close.